Here.
Milky.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Tyson.
Here.
Hunter, here.
Okay, meeting minutes from January 2nd. Have any comments or questions, or if not, make a motion to approve?
So moved?
Support.
As an alternate, no.
Don't have to be in the roll call as an alternate.
Brian, support or motion? Motion approved? Who motion? Taylor, motion? Brian, second? Those favor? I oppose. Minutes approved. Correspondents, board reports. Any updates, Brian?
Let's see, planning commission last month had an application on the property on Remus and Lincoln, with McGurk Sand and Gravel and storages. There are existing mini storages there currently, and they were looking at expanding that to the west and to the north. Some of the concern that was voiced in the planning commission was moving the mini storage too close to the commercial corridor. But the applicant also had a plan B, so we didn't vote on that, by the way, it was just discussion. They proposed a plan B to look at rezoning to the south, and move mini storage to the south. And that met with acceptance by the planning commission, and so that's begun that process of rezone. I don't know if the Board of Trustees has had that in front of them yet.
Not yet.
And that would require, again, a special use on that rezone. But the idea from the planning commission was to keep that mini storage off the commercial corridor. I think that's why it was done the way it was done. I'm trying to speak on their behalf, I can't speak for every member. And then Peter sent out today, thank you Peter, glad to see this. I don't know if you saw your email this afternoon?
I did not catch it myself.
Okay, so there are some drafts from McKenna's work on the new zoning ordinance. And as Peter wrote, you know, there's no action by us, but certainly take the time to read it, because we have to work this stuff, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you have issues, if you want to communicate them to me, I'll make sure I take those to the planning commission. Reasonable?
Very good. You've already communicated all of the, kind of the, regular repeat items that we've seen.
We did.
We kind of talked about that last year.
Yep. Wouldn't you agree, Peter, that we did a pretty good job with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we went through, I think Peter went through five years of past variance requests?
Yeah.
And then some of the notes and comments that we've sent back and...
Perfect.
Thank you.
Approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support?
Support.
Jake, support? Those in favor? All right, agenda approved. Okay, at this time, open up public comment to items not on the agenda. If anybody cares to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. New business. Read the announcement.
Yep, so tonight we will be holding a public hearing shortly, in a minute or so. This is a text interpretation for the B5 Highway Business District Zone. Currently, the Isabella County Road Commission is interested in possibly rebuilding on site and around their existing site. It's all Zone B5 Highway Business District. Back in December, the ICRC sought a special use permit for the expansion of their existing location, or I should say relocation. That special use permit was recommended for denial. After the denial, the Isabella County Road Commission withdrew their application. They still have a desire to rebuild, as their facilities are greatly aged. And so tonight, we have an interpretation, it's for all B5 Business District zoned parcels. Text interpretation would apply to any B5 parcel, regardless of the parcel, it would also apply to any other individual seeking to use B5 property. So it's not just specifically for this only applicant, or for just their properties. And so, I guess that opens it up, and we can have, we can read the public hearing, and then we can go into our public hearing, and so on and so forth. We noticed a public hearing to be held Wednesday, February 6, 2019, Union Township Hall, 2010 South Lincoln Road, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, for interpretations from Sections 23.2A permitted uses, 22.2C permitted uses, and 8.14 Essential Services. Highway Business District of the Union Township Zoning Ordinance has amended the Isabella County Road Commission an interpretation from Section 23.2A, 22.2C, and 8.14 on the following. Section 23B5, 23.2 permitted uses, subsection A references Section 22B4, 22.2 permitted uses. Subsection C allows for government offices to be built in a B4 and B5 districts. The functions of the Isabella County Road Commission are essential services. Under Section 8.14, construction of offices and facilities are reasonably necessary to fulfill its obligation to adequately maintain county roads as a matter of health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Isabella County, such that the construction of offices and facilities edits are accepted from the zoning ordinance. Further, the Isabella County Road Commission's may replace its offices and facilities at its current location at 2261 East Remus Road, Zone B5, as it is permitted in this used district, and that is a governmental agency which provides necessary and essential service relative to maintaining county roads with Isabella County, as it is obligated to do under the county road law of the zoning ordinance under Section 8.14, as those facilities are necessary to enable the road commission to fulfill its statutory duty. Again, I would just note for further clarification for anyone in the public and the zoning board, there are two sections of the zoning ordinance that we are being interpreting. The one is Section 8.14, titled Essential Services. We haven't used, or that I shouldn't say, that section has not come up very often, in my recollection, with this body. And so, in case you forgot your copy of the zoning ordinance, I highlighted and printed off a copy of that section for you in front of you. The other sections, 25, or Sections 22, 25, 23, we're a little more familiar with that. So, just wanted to let you know that there are two different sections of the ordinance that will be interpreted tonight.
Okay, thank you Peter. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up public comment for the text amendment. After public comment, then I'll allow the applicant to come up and speak, if they so desire. So at this time, I'll open up public comment to anyone who cares to step up to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment. At this time then, as the applicant, if they care to step up.
I'm going to give the introduction. I'm John Graham, Isabella County Road Chair, Terry Turnwell, Vice Chair. We have Pat Glucki from Studio Intrique, our architect. Next to him is our attorney, Mike Levine, and on the end is Joe White from Wolverine Engineering. So if one of these gentlemen, probably Mike, wants to get up and speak.
Good evening.
Evening.
Letting us appear, and I think you're all familiar with the site. And the structure that's on that site is very old, it's no longer really serviceable. And before, there was a request to relocate site to the north, and that was rejected. But as to this site, I think it's an existing use. And for the most part, the plan is to replace the building pretty much where the main building is now. It's not going to be on the exact same footprint, because it's going to be built to incorporate some of the functions that are in an older storage building slightly to the north, so that one building will be removed. So what we're looking at is, under the ordinance, we believe that this is an essential service. Now, standing that it would be consistent with the B5 view, based on the fact there would be the office to the front, and then there would be the garage that would be attached, it would be to the rear. So it'd look like a light industrial building. It would consolidate some of the functions in the one building to the rear, as I've indicated. And I think what is intended would be consistent with your master plan. We're going to have a totally modern building, built with high-quality materials. It would be a quality masonry to give it an attractive look. There'd be some, uh, steel panels, you'll have some windows along the front. As you enter that particular zone, it would be a great entrance and I think it would be consistent with what you're trying to develop as new facilities are built along that strip. And so, the appearance and, uh, the use would be pretty much consistent with a medium intensity, uh, commercial or light industrial. There will be some outside storage to the rear, as is the case now. So to the extent that there is some, uh, uh, storage to the rear, that will be maintained. There may be some relocation because, um, there will have to be some site work to accommodate onsite retention, water retention. But the building will reflect a quality image. And it will be built to last. The building that's there now is probably over fifty, close to sixty. Fifty-two. And it really, it's not attractive and it's a hazard to the people that work in it. And it's not functional. So, w- we're going to have a quality architectural, it's going to have the kind of interest from the road that you're trying to attain in a commercial, light industrial area. The administrative portion will be in the front, it will be ori- oriented toward the front of the site. And then, then there would be an appropriate transition to the garage and, uh, some sign shop and other related things to the rear. So what we're looking for is an interpretation that would, um, indicate that this is an essential service. Falls within that use as is, uh, stated in your zoning ordinance. It falls under that specific exception, but even so, the use we believe would be consistent with the B five zone. And it's, uh, really a replacement for the existing use that is on that site and has been on that site for, uh, so many years, going back to nineteen fifty-two. So what we're looking at is, um, oh, and also I would say with regard to some of the space in the rear, there is some shared space. So the drain commissioner has some storage there, it's consistent with what the road commission has. It wouldn't, you probably wouldn't know it unless I told you. And so what we're, we want to do is, um, receive a favorable interpretation. Uh, the road commission understands, you know, what is intended for that strip and is, um, willing to work with, um, the township and, uh, putting, uh, its building on the site in an appropriate manner, consistent with what you or the township has intended for that particular, um, commercial area along M twenty. So, um, to the extent that you have questions, we'd be glad to answer them. But, um, uh, we think it's, it's appropriate as this is an essential service. It's, it's an entity of the county, it's responsible for all county roads in this township and all townships within Isabella County. So if you have any questions, we'll be glad to entertain them.
Okay, I think at this point, um, if we may direct them to you, if we have a question, if you care to sit down, I think we'll discuss it from here. If you care to. I'll open up the board, I guess.
In my opinion, it makes sense that when you read over what an essential service is, there's, in my opinion, there's several, um, allusions to what this building services in the community. Is, and, and that's more or less what this is, is to determine whether, right? Text interpretation that this building is, we're going to be classified as an essential service building, right?
It's one of, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
That it would apply.
Yeah.
To that.
Don't meet you. I'm sorry for not having this. Let me just show you what is, what we're planning and it's dead, give you some idea of how that would be an enhancement. As that, that will look from a road.
Gotcha.
Can I, can I jump in on what you were saying, Taylor? So essential services, I understood why we were looking at the, uh, twenty-three B five, twenty-three two point two A, twenty-two point two C. I didn't see the connection to the eight one four. Um, and I know I've seen reference in our ordinance before regarding essential services, I just didn't see where it applied here. So I need, I need help seeing why this is part of this discussion.
Tim? I was, I was going to ask the question similar to Brian's, but I was going to, excuse me, jump back to section, um, five point one, or actually it's five ten, uh, where we're, we have the power to hear and make determinations regarding public utility buildings. I think that, that triggers the essential service, uh, verbiage right there. Which would then kick us back to eight one four. But it seems to me to be a, a very black and white interpretation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm of the same mind as Taylor is.
Specifically the verbiage referring to an existing.
Yeah. That's, that's helpful.
So, that, that to me was what triggered the ability to, to reference eight one four.
Okay.
And then obviously the essential service.
I just wasn't sure how this applied to the B four, B five aspect. Because I mean, a few things we were asked to look at in our packet was, um, whether or not this meant the definition of essential services, and I agree with Taylor and, um, you that, that it certainly seems to from my perspective. Um, I just wasn't sure how that applied to the B four, B five aspect.
I, I think it's going to be that it's allowable in any district. If you look at.
Because of five ten?
Yeah, I think five ten gives us that authority and then when you look at referencing eight one four and you go to the second, the last sentence there. The piece, speaking to the health, safety, or general welfare shall be permitted as authorized or regulated by law in other ordinances of the township of, of Union in any district. It being the intention here of except such direction, construction alteration, maintenance from the application of the ordinance. So, I think it's the, the in any district piece of verbiage there that would allow it to exist in the, the five. And the five gives it anything that's allowable to exist in a four. So, it's a little bit of a, a winding path, but it's there.
Yeah, and or the government of, or twenty, twenty-two two C refers to government offices. And then government office in this, with the.
Yeah, I just.
In A fourteen, in this whole department.
I don't think it's necessarily government office though, right? I mean, is it?
It's a branch of Isabella County.
But, but the primary, I mean, the, the primary use there is.
The office of the road commission.
It is the office, but it's also, uh, maintenance of the vehicles, the storage of the vehicles, storage of the supplies, the, the construction supplies, et cetera. I mean, just like a, a, uh, convenience station, um, or gas station has an office in it, right? But it's still defined.
Has its own board, it has administrator, it has clerical.
Well, I would assume most, any company that you go to has an office, they probably have a board.
In that office too.
I, I understand that, but I, but this isn't an office building. It's a building with an office in it that also houses the road commission. So I would not define this as, as you look at office buildings for the, for any of the following occupations or services, but not limited to executive, administrative, professional, goes through this list, government offices. Um, I, I've had this issue with some of our ordinance's requests in the past where they say, well, we have an office up front, but all the business operations are definitely not zoned for that particular district. You see what I'm saying? So you could have a strip club with offices in it and they may have management that sit in those offices and run the business, but they're not an office building, right? There's a, there's a stark difference for me. Now, five ten, I'm glad you pointed that out because that gives me a lot more latitude, but I don't see it as a, an office building.
I don't, I don't know that anyone's contending that it is an office building more that it's, it's, it's an existing use which, which we have referenced to.
Right, but that doesn't mean it's conforming use.
It's not conforming, but it's existing and then conforming, non-conforming, office, shop, pick your, pick your poison, it's still an essential service.
And that, and that's, that's the part for me that is helpful, thank you Andy. Because I just wanted to make the point that if I'm to look at this text interpretation, I would not define this, this use as an office use.
Agreed.
And we've had conditions in the past where they've, applicants have said, we're going to have offices up front, we fit in a B five. But the use, primary use of the business is not a B five business, but they use the office as the crutch to, to lean on to say, but we're an office building. And, and I don't see that in this case. I do however, agree that it's an essential service and if we have latitude via five ten, then I would be fully supportive of this. Cause I, um, very supportive of our road commission.
Right, it's not all office.
Right, there's storage, there's, it's, it's a trucking and maintenance and.
Equipment and all that.
Equipment, there's going to be, you know, trucks going through.
You're right.
Tim, question?
Yes.
So, just to play this out, making this interpretation, I, this is more to put your mind at ease, I think. We're not going to offer the idea that you could claim to have an office in a B five with some other wildly drastic main primary use, office being a secondary use. All we're talking about here is the fact that it's an essential service, so I don't want to get hung up on it being.
Right.
An interpretation to allow an office building with other uses. It is just to allow the essential service to exist in the B five.
Right.
I think that's where we ought to focus.
I didn't want to set a precedent.
Correct, agreed.
I prefer we look at it that way and not.
Cause if, if we gave that interpretation office building, we opened that precedent to, to have a water treatment facility in any B five, right? Which most people probably don't want a water treatment, like we see out west or east of town on that strip. And that would be considered a government facility, right? But I'm very supportive of five ten. Peter, is this still addressing how, i- if we look at the essential services alone, is that, address the interpretation that they're asking for?
Well, they have the two interpretations, one is the, is it an essential service and two, is it a permitted conforming use in the B five zone?
As far as.
So I think they stated.
Yeah, the, the essential, for me, the essential services, then that's, that's a slam dunk, it is. For my interpretation.
Right.
Whether it's, is it conforming in a B five, I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
As far as the text interpretation would go. But it would, I don't think that that necessarily, it doesn't exclude them in particular for this because of the stuff in five ten that brings it out. That's the way I look at it.
I concur.
Yes, Mike?
In the B four, you could have, uh, auto repair shop or garage for all operations or something in an enclosed building. So that's what the primary function of the main building is, is that, and the trucks will all be inside.
But you're going to have storage of salt and sand, you're going to have storage of salt and sand and other kinds of things.
Yeah, well, that's there on site. But it's also, um, where you have, in the, uh, commercial corridor, there are some, like paving company, they have onsite storage of material. And you have a contractor on the other side of the road, there's some outside storage. And I believe that's all within the same, uh, zone.
It's a, a light industrial back there. The pave, the.
Okay, so that already changed.
Central concrete and is industrial.
Under twenty-two four C, it does allow outside storage.
Yeah. Twenty-two four C states all outside storage shall be in the rear yard and shall be completely screened with an obscuring wall or fence not less than five feet high or with a chain link type fence. Greenbelt planting may be required so as to obscure all view from any adjacent residential or business district or from a public street.
Special use.
I, I still don't.
Not a special use.
I don't see road commission or construction, that kind of stuff listed in a B five as a permitted use.
The problem is, is in B five, it, it tells you that anything allowable in a B four is also allowed in a B five.
Except B four, is it listed there?
Yeah, that's what we're referencing right there. So if you go to B four, twenty-two two, and then you specifically reference section M automobile repair shop or garage, if all operations are conducted in an enclosed building. Then you have to skip ahead to twenty-two four, which was just mentioned, twenty-two four C to the outside storage.
And actually, we'd want to be looking at twenty-three point four D. It says, says essentially the same thing, and that's in section five. You have to excuse the ordinance where you have to jump back and forth.
I do find myself doing that a lot.
You, you start in twenty-three, twenty-three sends you back to twenty-two for the use. But then if you're looking for outdoor storage, you want to go back to twenty-three, uh, twenty-three point four D, D as in dog. It essentially says the same verbiage as twenty.
But again, the essential service component, it's not going to conform, but that's.
Well, I, so there's two pieces, one, so we're going to, we're going to make two motions because we have two interpretations, right?
I think you're talking about different sections, yeah.
Correct, so the first, the motion, it seems like everyone's in agreement about the essential services, so we can come back to that. That doesn't seem to be a big discussion topic. If you look at it from the, the standpoint of an allowable use, again, it's back and forth, right? You're in, you, you're picking some of the references from, from B four and in section twenty-two.
That's okay to disagree.
Which you can because B five districts allow that to be referenced as a B four. And then you, you're going to have to flip back and forth, but you're ending up at twenty-three four D, as Peter mentioned. And, and I think that it is, I think you can navigate through that. But then, you know, this is the part where you have to think about, you know, what are we predicated here? Cause there are, we're, if this were a variance request, it'd be going down our list of criteria and we can't allow an existing condition be the basis of our decision.
Yeah.
Right, if they're changing it.
And I, for me too, I'd, I'd like, you know, I, the, it's been in, since nineteen fifty-two, it's been this building. But there are government buildings and structures that change hands and go private at some point. So I definitely don't want to set something up where outside of this essential service, we say that it's a conforming use for that particular slab of land and that it transfers over with the land versus the actual people that own it currently.
And so to tag on with what Andy said, i- if you guys were to move away from eight point one four, or you have a general idea of where you're leaning on that, and if you focus on section twenty-three, when you look at twenty-three, it takes you to twenty-two. And so ultimately, you're looking at twenty-two point two C, government offices. Um, I, I gave you information in, in the memo, our ordinance doesn't define government or offices. Uh, I, I gave you the definitions from Webster's Third World Dictionary. That's the official dictionary that our ordinance defaults to with words that are not defined. Gave you the definitions of government and office. Uh, if, if you are on the, and so i- if you're in the belief that the road commission, uh, uh, is a government office, administration building of the road commission would be the, is a government office, it's its principal use, um, then anything about twenty-three point four D is pretty much a moot topic because if you're saying that it's a permitted use, then it has the right to have outdoor storage as long as it's in the rear, completely screened. And so ultimately, you're just, you're looking at, do you believe that it would qualify as a government office or not?
I don't think it does.
That's what you were saying, yeah.
I, in my view, it does not. There are government offices there, but there's more on site than just the offices. Fact that the primary footprint of that building will be for storing and maintaining the equipment.
It's, uh. Well, we've skirted on this conversation in the past.
Right.
About.
And I haven't changed my view on this.
Primary use doesn't necessarily mean the larger of the two buildings, okay? So the road commission functions in multiple ways, writing permits for driveways and, and easements and access and utilities. And, you know, there's, there's a whole separate piece of that entity that operates in that office that doesn't operate in the shop, right? They're, they're two separate pieces.
But I would say their primary function is constructing and maintaining our roads.
I, I would have our time disagreeing with that, yeah. I don't know how you would phrase it any other way.
Which is why I wouldn't view it as a clerical, I mean, there are clerical duties there. But I guess from my perspective, if we go back to essential services, it's a moot point, right, ultimately, because we would allow this.
They're two separate interpretations.
I understand that.
So we can say the essential service, they, they have the right to be there because they're essential service. We cannot say that they're an allowable use.
No.
If, if you wanna take the hard stance that they're not an allowable use because the office portion of their business, this office portion of their operation is not their primary use. Now we're into the primary-secondary rat race, which is a never-ending conversation, so.
So ultimately, you have two interpretations, you can say yes to both, you can say no to both, yes to one, no to one, but you'll have to vote on each one.
Well, I would, I would move yes for the essential services and no, obviously, for the interpretation.
That it's a permitted use in a B five.
Yeah.
That's where I fall currently.
And that, and that wouldn't preclude them from being there and doing what they needed to.
Essential services allows them to be in any district.
Yeah, would be able to be there, but it would protect and safeguard that particular plot of land for, if they sell. And I mean, I'm sure that's part of the consideration.
In a B five district.
I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement with that.
You would still have a permitted use for an automobile repair shop or garage. Even, and the office, both of which would be permitted. So I, I think.
Right, that's part of it, but I think the whole, this whole, in particular site has more than just that as well. Makes it questionable. Well, yes, um.
I, and I guess, I mean, it's up to you guys, but if you wanted to indicate in your motion that, um, you know, an administration building would be allowed, but, um, anything else, the, the truck storage or equipment, that, you know, that you wanna view that as a permitted use.
I, I actually tend to disagree with you, Brian, because, uh, the office building, I, I'm not interpreting, when I see this, I'm not being asked to interpret whether one is a primary or secondary use. And it's clear to me that the road commission conducts business in an office, cause I've been there and I've.
Yeah, me too.
You know, I've done business there, right? Then I've also seen the, the gravel trucks and I've seen the equipment shop. And in section M, twenty-two-two M specifically references the automobile repair shop and garage. So, to me, both of those things, as the applicant just reiterated, seem to me to be allowable uses. I would be more inclined to offer some kind of, it's not a stipulation, cause it's not a variance, some point of reference to this being specific, our interpretation is specific to this use or to this applicant, but I don't know if we're able to do that in a text interpretation, Peter.
Say that again?
I, I feel like it's, it's, in this case, it's critical, because we're worried about safeguarding for future turnover, right? That's the intent here, that we wouldn't say that this is an allowable use, because we understand essential services are allowable. I, I could see the argument for an office in, in twenty-two-two C and for the automobile repair shop or the truck garage, as they would refer to it, twenty-two-two M, both of those being allowable uses. But I would like to know if in the interpretation motion, we can reference this specific to the road commission applicate, application? Or is this interpretation in fact unanimous across or, or universal to all B fives?
Abroad.
It's for all B five.
Okay.
And that's where.
And, and I think twenty, twenty-two point two M, when it refers to automobile or repair shop, I think it's talking about retail garage, right? I mean, I don't see it, that the purpose of the structure here is to maintain equipment for construction of roads. To me, that's very different than an auto repair shop. So I, I'm just not gonna probably, I'll, I'll, I'll continue to disagree, I guess, on this issue that it meets conformity of the zoning, but I do agree that it's an essential service and therefore should be allowed. I mean, I, I, I can see your argument, but I don't agree with it.
And is it because you, is it because you go immediately to the assumption of a for-hire repair shop?
I- it's not just that, typically, when you're looking at permitted uses, um, I mean, at least in, in all the trainings I've gone to, when we go to, um, the ZBA training or planning commission training, if it's not listed as a use, then it's not a permitted use. And sometimes we're caught in a situation, especially with an old zoning ordinance that we have, that there are new modern uses that don't fit into the old code, and we go, well, we can kinda see it as a pool hall, even though it's not, right? But, you know, you, we shouldn't be trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, I don't think, when we look at uses. And they, we don't list, we do list government offices, but we, I don't think we list government utilities, which is what I think this is. I don't know if that makes sense, Andy. You don't have to agree with it, that's.
Yeah, no, I. I, I think I would, I would be more inclined to agree if that had some specificity to it not including a government road commission building, like if it specifically excluded it, like if it said it can't, you know, road commission building cannot be located in an R one district, right? If it was something like that, then I could see it, but because it is in fact, an automobile repair shop or garage. The or garage piece is what gets me, cause that's, that's what they're doing, right? They're servicing their equipment, right, it doesn't specify.
For, for construction of roads.
But it doesn't specify public or private, it just says or garage.
No, it shouldn't.
It just says garage.
And so, that's how it's easy for me, so I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree.
There's a little room for interpretation, I guess, still.
So, so will we back to the matter at hand of the motion?
I think.
Well, which mo, which motion do we, you guys have to do it as?
First one, in regards to, is it an essential service or not?
So if someone wants to make a motion on one or the other.
I think I'll start with that one first, I mean. That I think is, sets the tone. Somebody cares to.
Yeah, I'd move that it is an essential service, that the text interpretation, the applicant is correct.
For the health, safety and welfare of the county. A little more specific to.
Second.
Motion made by Tyler, second by Andy. Those in favor of the motion?
Or, or, cause I just wanted to point out, cause you guys had talked about section five point, or five point one zero here and make determinations public utility. So, I don't know if you guys actually wanna include in your reasoning, based on five point one zero. You know, the ZBA has determined the Isabella County Road Commission to be public utility building as an essential service. Eight point one four.
And I think it might be helpful to indicate into that, if possible, therefore it's permitted use, right?
Or what?
Therefore, it's also permitted use in a B five, because of five-ten, right?
That was, that was my initial argument, but you were.
No, I'm, I'm against, I don't think it's permitted use by the B five definitions of the zoning. I think it qualifies because of five-ten.
Okay.
And so that's why, in your guys' motion, I just want you to include five-ten and eight fourteen.
But I would think it would be helpful, what they're probably looking for is, can we build here, right? And so it might be helpful to have that as part of the motion, that we deem it permitted use because of five-ten, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just because we're, we're saying no to this one, but yes to this one, doesn't mean we're saying no across the board.
Correct.
This covers them.
Right, regardless of what happens with the next motion, up or down or whatever.
So Taylor, would you, would you accept an amendment?
I did.
That the essential service rationale, based on section five point ten, would deem this to be an allowable use in a B five district, uh, five-ten, which also references section eight point one four for essential services?
Yes.
Okay, motion amended, I would second that.
You'll second that, okay. Any other questions? Those in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved.
So then the second interpretation would be on section twenty-three. Is it considered a government office and therefore a permitted use in section twenty-three?
Facility is.
At this point, it's, it's an essential service, do we need the other?
I- if you would wanna withdraw that portion of the application, you can.
So we're good to go as an essential service?
Okay.
Okay. Well, yeah. We will withdraw it, all right, we don't need, uh, initiation, uh, interpretation.
You can make it easy on us.
We get along and we disagree, too, it's okay.
So you got that Jennifer, they withdrew their second portion of their text interpretation.
Interpretation down.
Okay, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You said one section to read.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
You want their lawyer here for this?
Well, it's, it's the, um.
Okay, I guess we got one statement to read to you.
Yep.
For us.
You got, we gotta, you gotta read.
We just have to read our state, the decision of the board shall not be final until twenty-one days after it is made. It is not finally made until minutes have been approved. At that point, the twenty-one day countdown will begin, minutes will be approved at our next meeting, March sixth. Uh, once minutes are approved, the decision is final and it'll be a twenty-one count day for appeal. Any person having an interest affected by any such ordinance shall have the right to appeal to circuit court on questions of law and fact during said period. Further, any person, persons, taxpayer department, border bureau, the towns who agree by any decision of the board of appeals shall have the right to appeal to the Isabella County Circuit Court on questions of law and fact.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hit or done?
Yeah.
Take care.
Okay, other business, do we have other business?
Andy, did you wanna?
Yeah, you wanna, can we talk about the continuing ad now, or do you wanna wait for a final board comment?
Sure, no, we can, we can bring it up now.
Let's do it now.
Yep, so the, um, I think you guys had saw an email about training, it started with Phil Squatrito, who's chair of the, um, planning commission. And then Andy had made a good point on, in both actually, the, the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, the, the rules uh, that we adopted and the bylaws that the planning commission adopted. It stated that it encourages all the members within their three-year terms to attend at least one training that's been recognized by uh, Michigan Association of Planning, uh, Miss, uh, Michigan Township Association, um, Michigan Municipal League or some other accredited, um, uh, organization that is similar. Uh, I went back and I looked in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, just that three-year period. I found the names of, um, a few individuals that I had record of attending, um, a program. Uh, if you have any kinda, if your name's not listed and you said, well, you know, I've attended a program the last few years. If you have a copy, typically they'll send, um, you an email, uh, letting, you know, about your, your workshop, so I may have missed it. Um, but anyways, uh, the, the folks that I have down in the last three years, I have Milky, Tyson, Gross, Serby, Darren, Squatrito, Worley, Webster and Fuller. Again, you may have attended a, a training that I just wasn't aware of or I didn't catch. Uh, but coming up, if you're interested, uh, we do have one training, uh, March sixth here in town. It's, uh, conducted by the Michigan Association of Planning. Uh, it, it talks about zoning administration workshop. When I read the description, it seems like it's more geared to, uh, a zoning administrator, but it also says that it's for any kind of municipal officials, other staff members or even citizens interested in more complete understanding of all facets of zoning administration. So, although I think it's more geared to a zoning administrator, anybody, um, you know, that has a, a hand in zoning decisions, I think you guys could learn from something. Uh, they also have other trainings, um, they have, uh, not too far away in Frankenmuth, the March thirteenth, I guess this might be more for a, a planning commission, they have a site plan review workshop. And then they also have, uh, planning and zoning essentials workshop in Kalamazoo, March twentieth. That sorta gives you, if you've ever been to one of those, uh, kind of a, uh, brief introduction, uh, review to both planning and zoning. Uh, doesn't go very in particular to either one, just gives you a overview. And so if, um, if you're interested in attending one of these workshops, uh, you can let me know. I, I typically sign, uh, the member up. And then you'll get an email notification from, uh, MAP, Michigan Association of Planning, that, you know, you're signed up and ready to go. I did note, I found that it was, was actually a couple of years ago, um, it was in the summer of twenty seventeen, collaboration between Union Township, the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County and Chippewa Township. Um, our planning commissions and ZBAs, um, uh, joined for one group effort, I believe it was held at the, uh, city. And I can't remember, I believe it was MAP, it may have been.
Was it a county building? I just think it was county building.
That might have been longer ago.
Okay, sorry.
But yeah, that we, there was a, uh, group training, um, at the, uh, the city and, um, yeah, I believe it is at the city, cause Jacob, I think, uh, took the lead on it. I could talk to, uh, uh, Tim Beebe, he does the Chippewa Township, I could talk to Jacob of the city. And, um, uh, um, I just lost the name of the, the indivi, Tim Neaport, I believe, at the county. Um, about, um, possibly doing that, it's been a couple of years, so, um, if you guys are interested, we could see about bringing MAP, coming back to Mount Pleasant maybe this summer as well, um, for any kind of zoning and planning.
My only hesitation was with this being March sixth, I don't miss it.
It would be, yeah.
You know, cause I, summers are always usually hard for everybody.
Yeah.
And, and my concern was mostly based on the fact that it was on the three-year turnover. And so, I know for myself specifically, I went to the one, obviously Peter has record of it, but that was when I was just an alternate. And now, so my appointment changed, right, so my term is different, so I think I'm probably due for another one. And so, I personally, I would prefer to be signed up for the March sixth one, just to know that I had it done.
It's like eleven to four, right?
Yeah, cause we have a meeting at night, so it's just, yes, it's during the day. It is eleven AM to four-thirty.
Yeah, the one, the ones I looked at that, I'm like, oh, I could go to that one, then I look at the time, like, oh, it's all day, dirty day, and that's difficult.
Right. I mean, if you have a level of confidence that we can pull together something, even, it doesn't have to be this year, it could be next year, right? Could be all within a, a window of appointments.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's the thing, is, um, this is just by MAP, but I mean, you know, that, like I said, I can contact MTA to see if they were, you know, available. Uh, Michigan Municipal League, uh, they're, you know, it's just not MAP, but I did notice, nobody has a term that's expiring until the end of twenty nineteen. And so the, you know, um, I think we still have time, it's just February now to, uh, bring a group training here at town.
That'd be great.
Yeah, if you can bring it in, let's do it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Although I thought you and I attended one maybe last year or something.
Cause I had you.
Down at the Comfort Inn or, uh, I thought you and I were at one, anyway. Yeah, seventeen.
I can double check to see if your name was on there.
Cool.
E- even those intro classes, if you've been in it before, you'll always pick up new stuff, then.
Yeah, I think it'd be good. Good hats off, Andy, and thank you for digging into that, Peter.
Yeah, it's possible or interesting to have another group.
So, Andy wants to go, anybody else definitely knows if they do or?
No, I was only interested in going if you couldn't get something together, but like you said, it's early, let's wait, I'm not gonna.
No problem.
I don't need to give up a whole afternoon, yeah, until I know that I have to.
Eve needs her better.
I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna lapse and be in violation of the bylaws, geez.
I have to sit out. Okay, extended public comment at this time, anybody care to talk about any item? Please step to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing none, close, extended public comment, final board comment.
May I?
Yes.
So we're not late yet, Jennifer. Okay.
But you got thirty seconds.
On, on the text interpretation tonight, not that I want to rehash that, but the issue itself of using an office as a front for an excuse to put a particular type of business in is an issue I've had for some time for various applications we've had before us in the planning commission. Is it reasonable to make sure that a zoning ordinance addresses this somehow? And if so, I'm curious about your thoughts on that as far as.
I could think of several instances as we sat here.
Primary or secondary use for a facility in a B-five?
But then you're going to have to establish the criteria. So is, is that criteria going to include something like proving the percentage of business like you would have to for, say, a liquor license and prove that your liquor sales versus your food sales, right? I mean, that's something to that effect. You have to establish some criteria, otherwise I can claim primary use because all of my business runs through an office and.
That's true with every business, right? I mean, really, every single business, whether they're industrial or what have you.
So I'm playing devil's advocate.
You can put an apartment complex in and say, well, we got an office right here.
Right, the leasing office is out front. So the question is then, if you wanted to distinguish that, and we're not going to hash this out tonight, what is the criteria to then define that? I think it's worth defining, I'm, I'm curious to see that happen.
Well, maybe then you would address the actual size.
Yeah, maybe accessory buildings can't be more than.
X percentage the size of the office space or whatever, but then that's even getting yourself in a tie, too.
Yeah, you're still wrong.
Well, then you, all of a sudden, now you're going to get into bulk height and density, and that's a whole separate issue that, I, I struggle with that physical size component being the determining factor.
And where you got to look at outside storage.
Because where it's happened, it's, well, our primary business is this, which is not permitted, but we're offices. And that's really what's happened, right? And that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how do we protect that?
So in that case, would you suggest then that you would allow someone to operate the office for, like if, if the road commission was here tonight asking us for the ability to put their office in that B-five, you'd say, fine, but then you go put your yard somewhere else?
Right.
That's, is that, that's where your mindset is?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the yard itself is what disqualifies it from B-five outside yard. In this particular case, it's that extra storage.
And I go back to twenty-two-two M and think, I, I could see it, you know? In that case, that particular case, the automobile.
And I didn't want to rehash that case, because, I'm just more broader, if.
Is that something you think you could ask of McKenna and see if they had?
Part of our discussion, because I know the planning commission's had similar issues on this too, and.
Must have run across it somewhere.
And so in many ways, I mean, when I came into this, that's how I viewed this, and that's my perspective. I'm like, I got to make sure we're, that these aren't being misused in those ways, so that we don't set precedent.
And allow us to use it later, yeah.
It's a valid point.
Yeah, I agree with the use of some of this stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
It's a grand running.
Yeah. Very well done, we'll adjourn the meeting, seven fifty-seven.